All the regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board to order. Today is Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, City of Cape Coral Council Chambers. If we could have a moment of science, please. If you could stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have roll call?
Manaya.
Present.
Rodriguez Mian.
Present.
Campbell. Campbell. Jackson, absent, excused. Mitchell. Russell Tate, District One.
Here.
Saez.
Present via teams.
He is present virtually. Saez. Parent representatives, Hoagland.
Here.
Frank. Frank.
Okay, thank you.
So, motion for approval of Charter School Authority Governing Board members who wish to virtually attend this meeting be allowed to continue to participate, discuss, and vote on items appearing on today's agenda, dated March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
All in favor? Aye.
He's in.
Thank you. And if we could get a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, yes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then the agenda for our regular meeting for March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now we have public comments, limited to three minutes per individual. We have forty-five minutes total. Anyone like to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. Anything there you'd like to share, Mrs. Collins, before we?
The consent agenda contains the items that will cover the year, starting next year, from January through February.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
It has to do with the present rules for lease program and access program in one hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy thousand, nineteen thousand, and so, please have to do a question to a very good example.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Mitchell. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Well, thank you. Now we have our superintendent's report.
Governing Board, I'd like to introduce to you Chris Kessler from Clifton Larson Allen, who did our end-of-year financial statements and audit, and he will give an overview of the audit to you.
Great, thank you. All right, let me, I'll pull up my presentation.
Okay, all right, well, good evening. Good to see everyone again. I'm Chris Kessler, principal with CLA, Clifton Larson Allen. I was the principal on your audit engagement for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. I want to just kind of briefly talk through the results of the audit procedures and some of the deliverables that we prepared. A little bit of firm overview, just a little background of CLA. We are the eighth-largest public accounting firm in the country. We are here locally. We're in Fort Myers and Naples. I sit in our Fort Myers office and run our Florida governmental practice. So the audit services we performed, as I said, is for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one, over your financial statements. Those financial statements have been audited in accordance with government auditing standards, as is required for an organization of your type. So the reports that we've delivered, so you have in front of you the actual financial statement document, which includes our independent auditor's report, which is our audit opinion, the report on internal control over financial reporting, which is also referred to as the report on internal controls, the management letter, which is required by the state of Florida, and then the governance communication, which is a separate deliverable from your financial statements. And what the governance communication covers is really the language and the items that we have to present to you all as the governing board, a summary of our audit. So i- its intent is for, if there's anything that you all read within the deliverables, it is that to tell you the audit went well, our scope did not change. If there were major issues, they would be included within that letter. There were none. But that letter's really our summary document. There are a couple of things I want to talk through that are in that letter, just worthwhile, and I think they're really the key, critical areas for you. The auditor's opinion on the financial statements, it was unmodified, which is a clean opinion. That means the financial statements were free of material misstatement, and the numbers were accurate within a material point. The scope of the audit, it proceeded as planned. We didn't have to change any of our procedures or anything along those lines. The significant accounting policies that the Charter School Authority utilizes within their financial statements are in accordance with industry practices, generally accepted accounting practices, GAAP. There was one change to your accounting policies this year that is indicated in our opinion, and it did change some of the presentation of your financial statements. There was a new accounting standard that wanted to affect this year related to fiduciary activities. So the real impact of that change was that your internal funds that were previously reported as agency funds, following your general fund financial statements, were no longer considered fiduciary in activity, so they were rolled into the general fund. So it did not change any of the day-to-day operations of the organization or how you handle those transactions. It really is a year-end accounting function that's going to impact your financial statements this year and going forward. There was one material audit adjustment that we did make during our audit procedures related to receivables and revenue, just related to timing of a payment that came into the Charter School Authority that was not accrued in the financial statements. We caught it and made the adjustment, and so that is reflected in the financial statements, but I have to communicate that to you. We had no uncorrected misstatements, which means everything we noted, management decided to correct and put into the financial statements. They did not pass any of our suggested corrections. There were no disagreements with management over the course of it. And then, of course, just as, you know, following up on that, a big thank you to everybody that helped with the audit process to allow us to get the audit done. It's always a pleasure working with everybody at the Charter School and the city in getting all the information that we need to get this done. So, you know, a big thank you there. Just quickly on our audit approach, for those of you that were here last year and saw this presentation, you know, our audit approach stays fairly consistent year to year. The couple changes that we really have to dig into every single year would be the two thousand and twenty findings that we have to follow up upon and see if they've been addressed, and, yeah, adjust our risk assessment accordingly. And then, of course, there was significant pandemic-related funding in two thousand and twenty-one that the Charter Schools received that we had to make sure that we dug into that and made sure we had, you know, enough procedures to make sure that those were accounted for correctly. So no issues there. We didn't note anything. We didn't have any adjustments or anything along those lines. So the findings that are included in the report, I referenced this before, is related to an audit adjustment and financial reporting. What these really cover is just making sure there's additional, enough review and approval over financial transactions during the year. There were some corrections and some adjustments that were made during our audit procedures. Because of the size and, you know, quantity of some of those things, we have to report them as findings, but also within the report and internal controls that you all have within your financial document, management has prepared the corrective action plan and their responses. So from your all standpoint, you know, findings happen. It's, you know, a finding is a finding, but where you all want to be concerned is, is there a plan to move forward, and is there going to be corrective action in place? So it seems like, based off the corrective action, and Mark Mason, who will speak after me with his presentation, can also elaborate on it, management has that plan in place. And so from your all standpoint, when we are sitting here after two thousand and twenty-two's audit, you'll want to say, did these roll forward or not? If they've been cleared, then, you know, there's, you know, enough of a warm and fuzzy feeling from your all standpoint that things are being addressed. So I do want to talk briefly on two thousand and twenty-two and beyond, and just some hot-ticket items. Before I do so, I want to pause. Any questions on my prepared comments or on twenty-one? No? Okay. Okay, so there's two new accounting standards that are coming down the pipe that are going to change the look and the presentation of your financial statements. GASB eighty-seven with leases, I believe we talked about this briefly last year, that will impact your financial statements for two thousand and twenty-two, and GASB ninety-six for subscription-based information technology arrangements will impact it for two thousand and twenty-three. The short version of this is that any long-term contract that you all enter into, subscription-based for twenty, subscription-based IT packages and softwares in twenty-three, everything else that falls under a lease for twenty-two is now going to have to be reported as a liability in your financial statements. So the GASB's intent is government organizations have entered into these obligations, you know, you're entering into a five-year term to pay out hundred thousand dollars over five years. They feel that it's appropriate to see that on the financial statements, so the users, whether it's taxpayers, citizens, regulatory bodies, can see what entities have obligated over time and future cash flows are going to represent. So the general recommendation is, is this is going to be financial statements, year-end transactions only. You will not change your day-to-day operations as far as the paying of the leases. From a budgeting perspective, I think you would still want to budget them in the same way you have. What our clients are typically doing is, is this is a year-end financial statement adjustment to true up the balance sheet and the financial statements for reporting purposes. If you try to do it month to month, it will be much more of a headache than would be worth in any way whatsoever.
Leasing our buses would apply to this in the future?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Leasing our buses in the future would apply to this?
Buses would be. So buses are a big thing for, you know, school districts and charter schools. If you're entering into a non-cancelable, longer-than-twelve-month contract, they would be included within that, and that can be obviously a big-ticket item that will make that liability large. The flip side is, so you're not putting a liability on your books that's suddenly going to make your net position look like it's in a deficit position. You're also now going to put a asset on your books for the right-to-use leased asset. So it's a zero impact on the equity, which, you know, again, it's, GASB likes to, they like to come up with things like this for everybody to do. So it is what it is. So that's what's coming down in the next few years and is going to change your financial statements. The other item I want to just hit on, information technology, security. I mean, with, you know, I talked about it last year with, during the pandemic, we saw an uptick in security incidents and potential ransomware attacks and things along those lines, just in governmental entities. At the start of the pandemic, they really ticked up. The bad guys were taken advantage of, folks working remotely, being distracted, being shorthanded, whatever it may be. Well, now with what's going on in Europe, we're seeing a massive uptick across the world of these, I don't want to say bad guys, just continuing their attacks and being more desperate in what they're doing. So you all, as an organization, you may not think, well, here in Cape Coral, Florida, we're going to be that big of a target. Everybody is large or small right now. So from your all standpoint, the concern is just be diligent, make sure you're having penetration testing or you're having security assessments. You know where you stand from a security standpoint, at least annually, because now's not the time to, you know, let that slide with what's going on in the world right now. The other thing, too, is internal phishing campaigns. If that's not being done regularly, you know, that's the easiest backdoor into organizations for these folks, is they send an email saying, hey, click here, you got a virtual Valentine's Day card, or something along those lines. Somebody's having a bad day, sees it and says, oh, that's great, let's click it and see what it is. Now the bad guys have a pathers' way into your systems. So the humans, the human element is the most vulnerable side of it. So just make sure that your employees are staying on top of that, and that they at least have that repeated messaging to be aware of that stuff. And then the last thing, I do want to just highlight, you know, we do, prior to the pandemic, we had a government training academy and all day of governmental CPE and training. It went away during the pandemic, and we went back to webinars and, you know, hour-to-hour events here and there. We are having our in-person event again this year, starting that back up, and it is May eighteenth. It'll cover GASB's, IT security, ARPA, and all the pandemic funding that's out there. We're working through the agenda right now, but that will be in person. So anybody in the organization that wants a full day of accounting and related fun, more than welcome to join. So with that said, you know, I thank you all for letting me present and give you a rundown of our procedures, and I'll pause for questions and anything else you have at this point.
Think we're good.
Okay, all right. Thank you all.
Come back to follow. All right, let me see if I can make this little thing work. It never works the way I want it to. It worked. It worked. It doesn't do this when we're working at the city council. Jeez, all right. So what I wanted to, Mark Mason, Financial Service Director, what I wanted to do tonight was kind of go over with you the actual financial statements. Mr. Kessler is kind of giving you an overview of the audit, some of the things that impacted the audit, especially the implementation of GASB eighty-four, which changed the nature of how we treat the internal funds. One of the things that actually extended the time period for us actually finishing out the financial statements, because, I mean, you might think of just mashing these two together and making sure you report them, but that's actually not really what happens. And so we wanted to make sure that how we were presenting it in the financial statements was the correct way, because with schools, and, you know, there's a difference between how schools report things and how cities report things. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing it correctly. So, and I think we did, clearly, because we had an unmodified opinion. So my goal here tonight is really to go through the financial statements with, kind of give you an idea of, you know, where, what we see as far as the financial statements. But when anybody's reading the financial statements, you're generally, and we just talked about the fact that, you know, there's an unmodified opinion. We have sections associated to the financial statements. I'm not sure if you brought your books with you, but, you know, I certainly take these to bed with me tonight and read them. So, you know, it's, I would hope everybody else does, too. So we have an introduction section, we have the financial section, we have independent accountants' reports, and then we have the management letter, which Mr. Kessler talked a little bit about. He reiterated with you the fact that we had the two findings. One of those findings has been cleared. As far as I know, we've sent the letter to both the school board and the state advising them that it's been cleared. So that should no longer be an issue. I mean, it's one of those things where I don't think we ever got notice that there was an issue until, you know, it showed up on our radar with a, with an email from our city attorney. So as soon as we noticed it, as soon as we found out about it, we took care of it, and it's all done. The, so when we analyze financial statements, we tend to look at them from three, three different ways. We look at them from a near-term financing position. We look at them from a financial position standpoint, and then we look at the economics of the position of your financial statements. In other words, where do your financial statements look, you know, from the economics of the environment of which you live, and where these, and where the, you know, the charter schools are located at? And so from a near-term financing, financial or near-term financing outlook, you have a financial statement in your books called the, you know, governmental funds. And so from the governmental fund standpoint, one of the things you don't see a lot of is the long-term liabilities on that particular statement and some of the long-term receivables that you would normally see in a accrual-based financial statement. And so in this particular case, we saw a net decrease in your overall fund balance of about point four million, resulting in an ending fund balance of ten point two million dollars. And when you're looking at this from, you know, on a school-by-school basis, you can see where, you know, who had the biggest impact on the overall fund balance, because we combined all four schools for financial statements and for reporting purposes. So you get to see where the overall impacts are and what had the impacts, okay? And so from a financial position standpoint, we're looking at your total net assets. Now we're talking about the accrual-based thing. We're talking about, you know, the overall system, and overall, we saw that your total net assets decreased by one point five million dollars, and some of this had to do with the recording of these, these longer-term liabilities that you might have on your books, and what those impacts will be to you in the future. As Mr. Kessler pointed out, we have two new statements that are going to be going into effect in twenty-three and twenty-four, and recording these longer-term assets, although we still have, you know, at least on the lease side, we'll have the asset, the asset on there, but we'll also have the longer-term liabilities and reporting, that we would hope that we're not going to see much of a difference, but we will see a negative, you know, a negative net position overall for the financial statements, because the more our governmental accounting standards board adds to our liabilities, the more that you see these negative numbers start to show up. But they certainly believe that everybody should be able to read the financial statements and recognize that these are your liabilities, and, you know, and there's certainly nothing wrong with that. But we recognize these liabilities when we approve these contracts. And so we know that they're going to be out there year over year over year, but, you know, they've just kind of changed the rules, as Mr. Kessler pointed out, so we can actually report them, like, here, together, okay? So overall, you saw your net assets decrease by one point five million dollars, you know, and then the, this was primarily, in this case, again, you know, as a increase in your non-current liabilities associated with your future pension obligations. You're with the, you know, the, the school districts with the FRS. The FRS, you know, has the majority of the state of Florida, as far as pension obligations are concerned. We have a little, small little piece of that, but as the liabilities, you know, depending on what happens with the interest rates, it depends on, you know, your returns on investments, et cetera, will have an impact on what we see as the liabilities, as well as future increases in salaries, et cetera, and that's how you see these liabilities going forward. So when, we talked a little bit about the implementation of GASB eighty-four. You know, this, for us, locally, you know, in our small little school group, this was a material change in how we report things. We've always reported the internal funds as an agency fund. It always stood out there. It's its own little statement, but at the same time, we needed to take these, we needed to evaluate every single one of them to make sure that they didn't meet the fiduciary standard, to be, and then turn around and combine those assets and liabilities on our books, to make sure that we're reporting both not only the revenues and expenditures, because now we're treating it a little bit different. Agency funds always just reported the assets and liabilities, and, you know, so basically netted to zero. Now we're recording the revenues and the expenditures to show that the revenues are coming in and the expenditures are going out, and also the assets and the liabilities. And yes, it's all mashed together, so you don't get to see that independent thing sitting out there, you know, with regard to your assets and liabilities with your, your internal funds, although we do provide a complete list of them in the notes to the financial statements of all of your internal funds, which I encourage you to read, okay? The fiscal year two thousand and four, you know, is, I mean, it's two thousand and twenty-one, your financial condition. I mean, we note that you have a favorable cash position at the end of the fiscal year, those, that cash plus whatever future FEFP money is designed to get you through the first three months until the new fiscal year really starts, you know, from a, from a timing standpoint for the FEFP funds. Well, you have stable revenues today, you know, and, you know, be very cognizant of the fact that ninety-nine percent of your revenues are fixed. So, you know, you're funded by a fixed revenue source that's adjustable at the state level, for the most part. You know, you also have some grants, I mean, from, when I say grants, not really grants, but you have title money that comes in from the, from the feds that we report separately, things like that. And of course, you have your contributions that, you know, help offset some of your expenses during the course of the year. But for the most part, you live on a fixed income, which is truly, I, it's a dynamic that, you know, you only really see in the school districts, okay? So what we're seeing from a, from an economic standpoint, we're seeing the expenses are literally on the rise due to our inflationary pressures that we're all feeling. And so as we move forward into, you know, the next fiscal year and the fiscal years beyond, we have to be very cognizant of the fact that I would expect that the cost of doing business for us is likely going to increase, but the revenues may not be keeping up, okay? Now, our legislature right now is in the process of putting together a budget, and it looks certainly favorable when you're looking at the, at the resources. Today, it looks favorable, okay? Tomorrow might be a different day, but today it looks favorable as they, as they get together and they finalize out the budget between both the Senate and the, and the House. And of course, the governor still needs to sign it and put it in place, or make adjustments or whatever he does with it, you know, from that point. So what we're looking at is that, you know, we're still going to see a fixed income going forward, but there might be a, you know, I won't, I won't call it a significant increase in the overall funding in the future years, but I, hopefully, it will keep up in some small way with the overall cost of doing business. So all four charter schools have maintained an A rating, you know, and I can tell you there's very few places that can actually say that. So, you know, they're proud to you all for keeping it that way, and absolutely to the principals and the superintendent for maintaining such a, you know, valued asset for the city of Cape Coral. Some other financial and non-financial data that will affect us in the future. We look at trends in population. Right now, we have an, we have a population explosion in the Cape, but at the same time, we have a fixed number of seats that are available in the charter school system. So I would say to you that, you know, our, you know, our, our list of, our list might grow, but I don't think the seats are going to grow. So we need to be very cognizant of that, that the charter school system is likely to stay basically the same size that it is from a student standpoint. Revenue trends, again, we see a slight increase in the overall revenues of about four percent. ESRS two, the allocation right now is at about two point seven million dollars. We're in the process of spending the ESRS two money, and of course, we have the ESRS three money at about a little over four million dollars. That's expendable for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. So, you know, we've got a bucket load of money that's come in to help, you know, solve some of the issues that we have with the charter school, but it's very limited in what it can be used, used for. And so, again, I, you know, I talk about the inflationary pressures, and we need to be cognizant of those, but the one thing that I, the, I can say is that the one thing that we don't really want to do is try to utilize one-time revenue sources to try to fix the inflationary pressures going forward. And that's what the ESRS two, and that's what the ESRS three is for, is, is one-time revenue sources. Some other economic conditions, recruitment and retention of teachers may become more of a challenge due to these economic conditions. Matter of fact, I heard that very loud and clear yesterday morning. I didn't realize it was quite that bad, but, you know, bad is a relative word, but clearly, I think it's an issue for all, for everybody in the state of Florida, and I don't know that it's not an issue here, okay? Our Cape Coral unemployment rate continues to be low at five point three compared to eleven point, eleven percent, you know, not a year ago. But, you know, this is certainly lower than the long-term average, and you saw a little bit yesterday with the new numbers that have come on board with, you know, new employment, you know, overall, you know, nationwide, you know, the unemployment rate is three point eight percent. So that, that's a big difference. And, you know, so if there's not a lot of people out there or a lot of people that want to do what we do, you know, that's going to impact us. And of course, you know, again, we have the inflationary pressures of the cost of, the cost of living increases. Last month, we, you know, when I say last month, month before last, we saw a seven point five percent increase in the overall CPI, and we expect that, you know, year over year, and we're going to see something very similar for February as well, year over year. Those numbers come out on Thursday. So now, is this, is this sustainable over a long period of time? Well, I guess the Ukraine thing might actually, you know, help that along for the sustainability, but when I say a long period of time, I don't think it's sustainable over a two- or three-year period. I think it's more like short-lived, you know, to two thousand and twenty-two. At least I hope so. So I will tell you that, you know, your near-term financing is good because you have clear funding that comes in on a monthly, on every single month, you know, but it is a fixed income. Your net position, you know, is fair. I say it's fair because over the last couple of two, three years, we've been spending down on the unassigned fund balance a little bit, and so we need to be very cognizant of that, you know, going forward, because your unassigned fund balance more, it should be used more for be used more for those one-time expenses that are not going to be recurring over time. And so, we'll, you know, we'll, we can talk about some of those things as we, as we talk about the budget, but those, that's what those revenue sources are for. That's what those reserves are for, for you. And the charter school's financial position is, again, I just said it was fair and the overall economic conditions, you know, will have an impact on the school and the operations, the funding, et cetera. You know, I'm not here to sugarcoat it. I'm just here to tell you exactly what we see, what we expect is going to happen and will, you know, that clearly, I think Dr. Collins and I and everybody, you know, want to make, you know, put our best foot forward to make sure that, you know, we continue the operations of the school and continue to educate the children. So, that's it for me. Any questions?
Questions? So, so the ESRS funds, I think you shared that those are for specific purposes, more for one-time. If we don't use those, does that go away or how, how does that work?
It, as I understand it, if you don't use it, then you do lose it. That's how I understand it. Now, that I'm, I'm also under the understanding that this is over, you know, '23, '24, 2023 and 2024. It can be used in 2022. The problem is, is that we haven't got the allocation yet, all right? There is one section in 2022 that I'm probably not going to talk about today, but something that we'd like to do before the end of the fiscal year. But beyond that, most of the expenses associated with 2023 and 2024.
And ESRS, ESRS 2 versus ESRS 3, that's for 2022 or that's, that's for a longer life as well?
If I recall, and Dr. Collins can correct me, I thought it was for '21 and '22.
Yes. ESRS 2 is expendable now and goes until, we have a deadline of September 2022 to expend those funds. ESRS 3 starts as soon as we get the, the funds. It was supposed to start in '22 and goes until '24. And we've had CARES Act, we've had ESRS 1, ESRS 2, we've had ESRS 3. All three of those grants have had different requirements for spending. They're all different.
Do we, is it too early to project that we may be giving funds back for ESRS 2?
Don't know. I, I, I don't know. I mean, this is one of those situations where it's going to cross fiscal years. I mean, we expect to spend it.
Mary Ann just said that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I can tell you right now they're spending it.
They, they don't want it back.
Yeah. They do, no, the state doesn't want it back. The school districts don't want it back. It's, you know, they, they want to make sure that we're expending the funds for the purpose which they were designed, which, as I understand it, is to help close the learning gap.
Right.
And, you know, I think all the teachers and the principals are certainly in favor of that.
And just a question that I have, so, so as the Cape grows, the population grows, the, the student population grows, is, is it that we don't necessarily see a need to grow the charter system because the public school system is taking care of the growth?
We would expect that to happen. I think what, what originally led to the development of the Cape Coral Charter School System in 2020, 2001, 2002, when there was little desire to expand the public school system in Cape Coral, you know, we're the, we're one-third, one-third? No, we're probably one-quarter of the total population of Lee County. I'm pretty sure they're paying attention to you from a population growth standpoint. I mean, you don't, you don't add 50,000, almost 50,000 people in, you know, in 10 years and not get an idea that, you know, there's going to be continued growth going forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Jackie Collins, Superintendent, I wanted to add to the report that we started, and I want to thank Chris Kessler and Mark Mason for all their help in explaining to us the processes that go behind the financial reporting and also the audit. We appreciate their help. I'd now like to talk about our accreditation. We were, we went through, through the process last November, and it was a four-day process. We finally just got our access to our report. And every time you go through an accreditation, you get a final report which gives you the details on where you excelled, where you need to continue to focus so that you can continue to make improvement. So, Cognia defines continuous improvement as an embedded behavior rooted in an institution's culture that constantly focuses on conditions, processes, practices to improve teaching and learning. And this accreditation process examined our whole institution, the program, the cultural context, and the community of stakeholders to determine how well the parts work together to meet the needs of our learners. So, the review team that came in gathered evidence that we provided. They gathered information from our stakeholders, and you were one of the groups, to determine how we performed against the 32 performance standards in three domains, leadership, learning, and resource, okay? So, in addition to evaluating us against these 32 performance standards, they also give us a rating on a rubric called a level of impact rating. There are three levels, initiate, improve, and impact, okay? So, initiate means the system has initiated improvement in certain areas to cause or achieve better results in the future. Improve means the system has attained their desired results because it's been in place over time, which is a good rating. Impact means the desired practices are deeply entrenched or embedded within the system. That is the highest level of improvement on the rubric. Institutions also receive an overall score called an Index of Educational Quality. It's on a scale from 0 to 400. And then, we also receive a CIN, a five-year IEQ range, which is the Cognia Improvement Network Institutions. It, it takes an average of the range in which all the institutions that Cognia accredits over the last five years, it gives you a range of where they fell. And I'm happy to say that our overall score, and I'll show you in a minute, exceeded that range by over 100 points. So, let me just show, let me just walk you through the final report. I know you have it. I'm happy to answer any questions. That's how this works. I'll just show you this, okay? So, these are the different categories for our ratings. Here's initiating, improving, impacting, insufficient, doesn't apply to us. And these are all the domains. Here's the leadership capacity standards. This entire domain, these are all the standards that we had, we got rated against, and these are our rating scores. And as you can see, the majority of them are impacting the highest level that you can achieve. We have a couple that are marked improving, and I'll explain how they adjust that to us, how we need to make changes and improve in those areas. But as you can see, here's our learning capacity. We're impacting more learning capacity, resource capacity, and finally, our, and finally, the end of our resource capacity standards. So, in other words, and this is the, this is the beauty of the report, I'm sorry. Here is our institution IEQ score. We scored a 386.41. Perfect score would be 400 points. The average range of all the institutions over the last five years that have been accredited by Cognia fell within this range, 278 to 283. So, as you can see, we far exceeded any other institution that this company, that's national, has accredited in the last five years. So, I really have to attribute that score, which you don't ever really see, to the principals, their teacher teams who did, who collected all the evidence, our stakeholders who were interviewed that shared what they know as information that helped us to, to formulate a score like this. So, in addition to the, the IEQ score, they give you feedback as to what they would like you to work on. And there was one, they kind of summarized it into one statement. They said that they would like us to work on our standing operating procedures. And it was funny because in the executive summary that I wrote, we identified that. We knew that that was going to be an issue that we needed to work on because we discussed it in our strategic plan the year before. We knew, we could pinpoint the areas of weakness. We were more hard on ourselves than they were. But as far as the overall area that we need to work on, we need to develop those particular procedures for everything that we do. We've got policies, we follow them well, we've got procedures in place, we've got manuals, we've got a manual per building, we've got a manual for HR, we've got a manual for everything. But I think they want to see it in one place so that when another group of leadership comes in, they can take what we've done, they can tweak them as they go, but they can maintain that high level of leadership and excellence that they see in our school system. And I'm just going to read you, you have some of these, you have these in front of you, I want to read to you some of these quotes. "The engagement team noted the quality of the journey that our system has accomplished. The team was especially attentive to the phrase 'data-based and student-driven.' That describes the system's approach to meeting the needs of all students and how carefully processes and programs are aligned to these guiding words resulting in the high performance of the system and its students." They mentioned, "The system maintains an outstanding culture that focuses on transparency and allows the schools to face challenges head-on." "The team noted how effectively the culture of continuous improvement is driven by open communication, continuous information, engagement of stakeholders, and virtually every aspect of systemic operations, and information from the collection and analysis of data so that transparency is a natural byproduct of everyday functions of the system." They also said that at every level, from the superintendent through the families, there is a pervasive sense of community that engenders a common bond of trust, values, performance, and integrity. "System leadership and employees described how all plans, activities, communications, practices are designed to foster and sustain the qualities of caring and the building of relationships for the sake of students." They did say, "There's no doubt that this is, this system is student-driven, and that's what they're looking for." They also mentioned that one of the stakeholder, one of the review team members made the observation. They said, "It's very difficult to stay, it's very difficult to make it to the top, a top-performing system in the state, which is what they're calling us, but it's even more difficult to stay there." So, the team discussed how we must continually fine-tune our processes and procedures to continue to improve. These gains are achieved in very small incremental increases over time." And I can go on and, and, but you have some of these comments in front of you. So, I think they were very pleased, and I told you when they gave us our exit interview, they said, "It's, it's a rare day to see an organization at this level of, with this level of effectiveness." And it was one of the greatest systems that our lead reviewer had reviewed, and he's been around for a very long time. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about our engagement review. We have five years to make these improvements. We are members of their leadership organization, so we can attend trainings for free or at a very low cost to us so that we can continue to grow and learn on our improvement journey. But I want to say one more time, and I want to make sure that I reiterate it effectively, that this was the work of a village. This was not one person, not one school, not one stakeholder or stakeholder group. This was a village that put this together for us. So, I congratulate my team, who's done a very wonderful job. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions? Are they phenomenal, incredible, amazing, awesome? Could we go back to the, the slides where it had the green? You mentioned that we may be looking at some of that.
Those areas of green, they categorized, or they summarized as areas that they could, they could focus on our SOPs, on our duty to create more specific SOPs for everything that we do. So, hold on, I'm sorry, just give me a minute. So, here's the first one. This is standard 1.7, "The organization markets and promotes itself through processes that are transparent and reflect the organization's purpose." Well, it's, it's kind of funny that they picked that one for improving because I have a nice, big paragraph about how transparent we are in our processes, but I think the goal is that we need to write them down so that future leaders can come in and duplicate what we're doing. The next generation of leadership and teachers, they'll know what we're doing and can constantly tweak and work on it. And 1.9 says, "Leaders implement operational processes and procedures to ensure organizational effectiveness and professional practice." Once again, ties into writing down what we do. And here's the last improve. Standard 1.11, "The organization provides, provides experiences that cultivate and improve leadership effectiveness." Well, we do that, and they said that very clearly, and we do it well. We need to record how we're doing it so that we can maintain it.
Fantastic. Is this something that, I mean, just the general review, is that something we can put into like a press release or?
I think we should.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think this is very unusual. So, Kathleen and I will work on getting a press release from Cognia. They have them already kind of printed, and we'll make sure that we get it out to the media.
Fantastic. How exciting. Doesn't get better than that.
I have a couple more things I want to share very quickly because at the last meeting, Dr. Manaya tasked me to take a look at teacher recruitment and staffing and retention. So, I put together another bar graph that I'd like to share with you, and our HR department created this for us. From 2016 to, to, to this year, this graph reflects in the blue the number of teachers that we've hired every year. So, we have 250 employees, teaching, teaching staff. Every year, we hire about an average of 36 teachers across all four schools. Every year, we term an average of 22 people across all four schools. And the word terminated is, has multiple meanings. It can mean it was involuntary, it was voluntary. And we, we have a list that we've compiled of the most recent reasons why our teachers are leaving, and they go for a variety of reasons. A lot, a lot of them, I should say, in the last few years have to do with COVID. Fear of COVID, fear of getting sick, having poor health, needing to remove themselves from being in the presence of students, which could be dangerous. No option for remote teaching. Once the governor said no, we had to be back in place in brick and mortar. Lately, it's come down to student behavior. What we're seeing as a result of the pandemic is that student behavior and student mental illness and student anxiety and student acting, students acting out has increased dramatically. Some teachers have relocated. Some are leaving the education field. Some have decided to stay home with family for a variety of reasons. Some, but few, have had a contract not renewed. Pregnancy is one of them, but typically, there's not any one generalized reason why they leave. There are currently four teaching positions open. We have an Oasis High School math teacher with zero candidates. We have a social studies teacher positioned open at OMS with two candidates. We have a robotics gaming teacher, two candidates. We have an ESE teacher positioned at Oasis Middle School, none, no candidates. And there is currently one guidance counselor position open with zero candidates applying. So, I, what I'm, what I'm, in my opinion, I don't believe we've seen, because from the graph that we have today, and of course, the year 2020, this really isn't a good reflection of how many teachers have left the, the system because the year's not over. And usually, we, that's when teachers tell us we're not going to come back. We send out forms to say, "Are you going to return and what grade level do you want to teach? What position do you want to be in?" And that's when we find out the majority of teachers leaving. This has been one of the biggest years where we've had teachers leaving mid-year for a variety of reasons. But I do think, and I think what we'll find is next year is going to be the year that we're going to see if we have a problem with. we're going to see if we have a problem with hiring teachers. I think we've stayed kind of status quo throughout the last couple of years. 1920 year, the year of the pandemic, that was the best year for teacher retention. But this is an interesting graph. These are teaching applications that we have received. 2016, 17, you know, and 17, 18, we had 280, 312 applications for teaching positions that came in. This past year, we're down to 112. So that's very indicative of who's out there and who's looking. That pool, I think, is dropping. We're very lucky, though, because we have teachers that, most of our teachers come from the Lee County School District. They come because they, they want to see something different, they're looking for something different than what they can, what receive in Lee County. That's where we get the majority of our teachers, and they are coming. But this graph is concerning. So I think in the future years, we're going to start seeing some issues with the applicants that are out there, they're just, they're diminishing. Any questions?
Well, we briefly spoke about the article in the paper today with Lee County School District for High Schools and how they were looking to expand the number of periods. And I don't know how, but that would reduce the number of teachers that they may need, and even though there's going to be attrition, they won't necessarily need to backfill, and they'll get planning time. So we're looking, so we're not, we don't have to follow their guidance or their decision, right?
We don't have to. We are going to evaluate it at the middle school and high school to see if it is cost-effective in any way, will it save us some money? Will it require us to hire less teachers if we don't get outside applicants coming in? Can we exist with what we have, or maybe a few less? Because at the end of every year, teachers leave, and that's just part of the game. So we're doing our own analysis to see if it benefits us, and we have not come to any conclusion yet. I can tell you that there is no one particular model, a planning period model, that is more effective than another. Research has pros and cons for a seven-day period. A four-by-four, which is four day, one day you have four periods of 85 minutes, and the next day you have the second day of four different periods of 85 minutes. There's nothing that really shows that one's better than the other. It has to do with what works best for your school, your staff, your students. So I'm really going to put that on our principals to do their evaluation, because they know. They're going to let me know after a thorough evaluation as to whether or not that's beneficial for us. We're not going to make a quick decision. We've got, we've got some time to do that, so. Okay. Thank you.
All right, now we've got. Office of the City Manager's report.
Waiting anxiously. Is this thing on? Hey, Jonathan, because I've been having trouble hearing people in here. Oh, there we go. Okay. I was straining to hear Mark, and I was just like waiting on every single word he was saying with his report on the finances. Mesmerized, I think is what. County Baron Assistant City Manager, so happy to be here tonight with Dr. Manaya, Councilmember Tate, and the members of the board. Congratulations on your report, on the accreditation report. Once again, it just illustrates how good our teaching staff is and our whole educational staff is over at the charter schools and why we think so highly of them ourselves. So now we're just proving it to everybody else how good we are. I just wanted to quickly address one of the things that Chris brought up in his report regarding information technology security. I know our IT director is here, she wasn't expecting to talk. But I'm going to ask her just to come up just a little bit, because there's one thing about the city of Cape Coral, we are, we have a laser focus when it comes to network security and any IT security. And we've been working with the charter schools now for about the past year, upgrading some of their systems. So I was just going to let Michelle real quickly just touch base on, without giving away any trade secrets, some of the things that we do to make sure that we keep our information safe.
Michelle Hoffman, IT Director. As Connie said, we don't like to talk publicly very much about security. It's just not a very good idea, in my opinion. But the schools did fund half of a security FTE for us to use, and we've been putting that person to very good use. So I think we've made a lot of good strides in the year or so we've been working with the schools.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Dr. Manaya, oh, I'm sorry. I also wanted just to say that we did, we had security training at the beginning of the school year, where we had an expert come in that the city organized for us to teach our teachers about what to look for. And I think that's going to be a year, reoccurring every year.
Yeah, and I heard that that went very well, and the teachers were very receptive. And so I know, I know Beth and IT really appreciated the cooperation and attendance there. I continue to be very pleased with our continuing and growing partnership with the schools. As we move forward, I did provide Superintendent Collins with a copy of the master, well, not master lease, it's the permissive use agreement with the middle school gym. We have signed it, and as soon as she gets it signed, everyone will get copies of it. So we have that particular item now taken care of. We are getting the ever-present Chapter 26 that you hear about. Had some discussion last week with the city attorney, and we expect to have that ready, I think, for the, for council to approve, because it would be a council-approved ordinance. And we'll also provide that information to the board, so you guys will be aware of any of the changes. We don't expect anything significant, I know I've said that previously, but I want to emphasize that, that we expect some minor tweaks in that, but we will certainly make sure you are aware of those tweaks. Okay. We have just a couple of updates for you this evening. One of them is just a quick update on the portables. I've asked Mark Ridenour to hang around tonight to give you just a real quick update on that.
Good evening, Mark Ridenour. Not much has changed since last update, last meeting, but we are very close to hopefully finding and agreeing to a contract for a modular building similar in size that has a state contract that we can, we can utilize. We're going through legal procurement right now to try to finalize that deal. And as soon as we confirm that that will be acceptable, that will go to Q Grade E Minor, the engineering firm, to finish the design, which we will begin, then, once we get that, we will start the permitting process. Moving forward.
Thank you.
I have asked Damon to come tonight too and give you a little update on the custodial services. As we were talking about unemployment and reemployment and just employment in general, we, as you know, when we took over the custodial service, we ended up turning that into full-time positions, because we were having trouble even attracting people to apply for contract positions. So we made all of those positions full-time. We were very excited a couple of months ago when we were at full staff, but I understand now that we have some custodians that have left. So we're back again trying to fill some gaps and recruiting again, but I was going to let Damon give you just an update on that.
Good afternoon to the board. Damon Grant, for the record. We do have four open positions within the charter school custodial program. We are, next two weeks going to be interviewing for new custodial candidates, and we've also reached out to Hiring For You, which is a temp labor vendor that we use, and we have two that we expect to be bringing onboard as a stopgap within the next couple of weeks. Other than that update, I told you about the elevators for the last meeting. We have been meeting collaboratively with the charter school administrative personnel to talk about custodial issues, maintenance issues, and then some just finance and budget issues, and how we're going to make this happen, and making sure that nothing drops through the crack as we talk about responsibilities between what used to be charter and now city. So I think those meetings are going to continue, and I think that they were productive. And I think we're going to bring Mark Mason's group into the mix too and talk a little bit about account strings and funding, because it's new to us all, so. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that Damon had told us the other day about the custodial is, it's a lot different being a custodian of school, of a school than it is being a custodian of a, of a city government building. There's just a lot more work involved, and it's probably a little bit harder work. So when they bring on these, some of these folks, they just didn't realize just how much more work it is to keep a school clean. So, I mean, obviously, in the elementaries, I'm sure, pretty.
Are they? Elementary's kind of tough sometimes.
There were a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up. We are, I know that the school year is ending in a few months. When is the last day? When's the last day for students, do you know? Oh, you guys know, okay. So it's, it's just around the corner, really, when you stop and think about it. As you know, we've been using this as a transition year with regard to some of the employees out at the charter schools. So we're continuing to evaluate that. We expect to have some decision moving forward as to which employees we will be bringing on, and maybe which ones will, will stay at the charter school. So we'll be talking about that amongst ourselves here in the next, probably the next few weeks to just, we want to make sure that the folks that are there know which ones will probably transition to the city, or at least have the opportunity to transition to the city if they so choose. I know Angie Klein, she's here from HR, she's been working with the charter school, with Jackie, working on some pay scales and some pay ranges for some of the administrative staff out at the school. And I think we'll probably be making some adjustments to their pay, based on what I saw. Still having, I'm still having a hard time believing what we were, yeah, so. They need to get a little bump, let's just put it that way. Then, let's see, who else is? Am I forgetting anybody? I don't think so. So I think that that might be it for our updates. Again, I'm very, very, very happy with the way things have been moving along with the, with the charter schools and with our partnership with them. I know Mark is working very closely with Jackie on developing the budget. And I know that once we finalize that budget, it would be a good, solid budget for the schools. And I think that that's about it. Mark, do you have anything at all that you want to add to it? Okay. And then that mark too, yes. There's too many marks here, okay. But that's, that's real, that's all I have for you this evening, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
So, so we did receive the letter from Lee County School Board, right, that they're not going to share, right?
I was shocked.
And then they sent, but what other needs might you have that we can consider if we may be able to provide funds for that?
Yes, and Superintendent Collins came up with a list of potential projects or items or capital expenditures that we could be eligible. I know, I provided that to Mark Mason, and he's also working with our maintenance and capital folks too, to see what they think might need to be added to that list. It's just, it just seems like they're not going to be, I know, that was the very last paragraph of a three-page letter.
Right.
That said, oh, let us know what you might spend it on, and then also let me, let us know what you didn't spend it on. I thought it was very interesting in Superintendent Collins' listing, how little has been spent on capital, because, again, we, just because of budgetary reasons. So it's not as if there's been a lot of spending on capital, so we definitely have those needs at our schools. But I, I'm not optimistic that they're going to want to share any of the half-cent sales tax. I was speaking with a, I guess, a candidate for the school board the other day about the different revenues that our charter school has, and how limited we are with our revenues. And Mark even touched on that today when he was talking. And one thing that I did bring up to that individual, and I've brought it up before, is if they don't want to share that money with us, there's nothing that, and they can come up with lots of reasons, or that they don't have to. They also have this DCIM money that they get from the property taxes every year, and it's that discretionary capital improvement millage. And I don't think there's a limitation that would prevent them from, if they really wanted to help us out, providing some of that. So that's a big pot of money for them that they get every year.
And we have one more question.
I was just going to let you know, we did get a letter from the new superintendent-to-be through city council, and we did ask the mayor to reach out with him and set up a meeting for us at his convenience, once he gets settled in. So we are anticipating keeping the line of communication open with him, as well as, you know, four seats for this year's school board. And I don't know if you all have been attending the little political things that go on where you ask the questions, but we have been. And everywhere we go, we ask a school board member candidate, would you support the charter schools? And it's amazing the difference in the people that are running. And remember, there are a ton of people running right now. The races are pretty packed. So you've got to really get out there and see who are the ones that can benefit all of Lee County, but also have a heart for the charter schools. And there are a few. So it's exciting to see that change, as well as if we get some communication from the superintendent, we'll let you know, and then hopefully he would be able to come and address us too.
Great, thank you.
And I know we in the city manager's office too would welcome the opportunity to sit down with the new superintendent and talk to him too about that DCIM money. When I say that, when I'm talking about the discretionary capital millage that every school district has the option to put on, you know, on the tax roll and stuff against the properties, it's, I'm not asking them to do anything new and inventive. Pembroke Pines and Broward County already have that model, where Broward County has provided, and they continue to provide some of that DCIM money to the Pembroke Charter Schools, because it is a, guess what? It is a government municipal charter school. So it doesn't feel, Broward County doesn't feel as if they are obligated to treat every charter school the same over there, because Broward County looks at Pembroke Pines as a municipal charter school. So we're the only other one like Pembroke Pines. So I would certainly welcome the opportunity to sit down with the new superintendent and see if we can swing a deal, so to speak.
Absolutely.
And there's no, do either know how some of the other legal issues across the state are going with this, or we pretty much, we won't pursue legal, any legal next step, let's say?
Are you talking about the half-cent sales tax? You'd have to ask Mark about the legal side of it, but.
If you'd like, we can discuss that. Sure. Great. All right. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
And now we have the chairman's report. And really, I think, first off, the the evaluation that was done is just absolutely incredible, right? So, and I think the, the points that they, that they shared, it's just, it's very hard to reach the level that we've reached. So that's phenomenal, but it's harder to stay at that level, right? So in the spirit of, of how can we continue to improve, we did have a strategic planning session about a year or so ago, and, and there were a number of environmental issues that we were working through, COVID and others, but there's a number of others that have changed, right? So my kind suggestion is that we consider a, you know, So my kind suggestion is that we consider a, you know, maybe a mini workshop of a couple of hours where we recalibrate the strategy and just see, you know, are our assumptions from a year or, or longer still valid in, in each of the areas that we develop the strategy, the three-year strategy around and then see which ones might need to be modified. So my suggestion is that maybe by the May timeframe, if we did, if we did something in May, that helps us consider that into the, the summer planning cycle or we could consider doing it in October. But my suggestion would be, yeah, let's take a look at the strategy, see, you know, what we've been able to accomplish, what changes, and now with some of our departments going into the city, how has that changed the game for us in terms of our strategy and then have a, maybe a more effective strategy going forward, right, with, with some of the new, the new variables that we can now see are realities. So, and so, so to do that, well, first off, let's have, any questions or thoughts about something like that?
We do have workshops coming up. We have.
Budget workshops.
Budget workshops and then we also have a options and partnership workshop coming up.
I don't believe so.
Oh, that's on my calendar, so I don't, I don't know, maybe it's.
Okay. So any, any, anybody not inclined to have a special session whether it's in March or in October? In, sorry, May or October?
Probably should be in May if we're going to do anything for budgeting. My foundation, my client, Terry Budgeting, that one starts, so we should really.
Yeah, and really, I've been to so many of these calibration sessions and they're not the two days that we spent the last time around, they're really two or three hours that we just check what's, what's changed, right, and go from there. Do we need a, do we need a formal motion to move ahead with that or we can just plan a special meeting?
Well, let's have a motion so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Okay. So in essence, it would be a motion where we have a special meeting to calibrate the three-year strategy and determine what, what items might need to be modified.
Dr. Manaya, should it be a special meeting or should it be a workshop? I don't know what the definition of special meeting entails versus workshop. Is there any kind of difference?
Generally, special meetings are voting meetings, you're going to take a vote, a workshop.
Workshop? Okay, then I'll edit that to be a workshop.
The motion to create the workshop needs to be held in the name of the.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great, thank you, thank you. And now we've got another phenomenal report coming up, the foundation report.
All right. Cheerleading outfit, sorry, I'm not business casual, I mean, no disrespect, I just had to wear my rally shirt. Gary Serny, Foundation President. Just want to run through three things real quick. I know it's, I always come up here and I act crazy, whatever, but I do want to actually, little comedy relief, but I do want to sort of go over a couple of things. One is, just want to sort of redefine what it is that we do so you all understand and I think we touched, touched on this. We have a pretty smart board. We do discuss a lot of things. We have a lot of synergy, I know Jen Hoagland's on our board as well. We're pretty in tune with what's going on with the school system regardless of everything else. And we try to model our structure to give as much as we can for what we have, the resources we have, and I know we kind of come at it from a different angle, but we do, we almost consider ourselves sort of cheerleaders for the school system, you know, so, so we do have our thumb sort of on what needs to be done and, you know, the last year or so it's been really focused largely on educators because I know teacher retention's an issue everywhere and I think we're probably doing better than some, luckily. But that, that's a big focus for us, the COVID thing was a huge focus for us, you know, we have a phenomenal nurse, we have, there are a lot of issues that kind of flow through the school that kind of, they're not really glamorous, they're just kind of, you know, but, but we really see the validity of it more and more, so. So the first thing I'd like to do is sort of recognize our, our board, can I do that? Can I just list the people on our board?
Please.
We work really hard, you know, there's no pay, there's nothing, I mean, we, you know. So I'm Gary Serny, the president. Jen Hoagland, or I'm sorry, Jen Ho Bellis is our vice president. Most of you probably know who she is, she's, does a lot of stuff. We've got Jen, Jen Hoagland right there, our treasurer, who's, wears like eighty half, I'm not really sure how you get time for all that, but we have Chris DeMoya, also very, very smart lady. She's our secretary slash grant coordinator, so she deals with all our grants throughout the year, we do them every month. And we have Samantha Richardson, Gail Hawthorne, Heather Dinkle and who am I forgetting? Dina Pollard, sorry. Anyway, just wanted to say their names just so you, you know, knew who they were, they're on our website, but again, we work very hard, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at, you know, at like eight fifteen, so. But anyway, so, so we worked very hard, so to lead into that, or I'm sorry, to lead to the next thing, we just did our Lighthouse Awards and thank you for attending, I think most of you did, thank you so much. It was very positive and honestly very much needed and I don't know how many times I heard that from people, including Ms. Collins right here. They need to be celebrated, you know, every, I mean, I own a business, our company culture, we've had to step it up, we're given bonuses, we're, you know what I mean? That's, that's really, really, really important, no teachers, no school, sorry, you know, not to state, you know, schooling one-on-one. But anyway, so we did that, the, the event was very, very positive, it was at the Yacht Club, it's one of the last events, I guess, at the Yacht Club and hopefully y'all had fun. And I'd also like to just list the names of the teachers that won, is that okay?
Yes, please.
Throw out some love, you know, you know, the fairy dust thing, so. Let me, so from Oasis High School, it was Patrick Missawi. From Oasis Elementary North, it was Matthew Laban?
Laban?
Laban, I, I'm sorry, debauché is his name, sorry, Matthew. From Oasis Middle, it was Lori McLean and from Oasis South, it was Virginia Tan. Incredible teachers, I mean, the final, everybody's incredible at that school, you know, at this school system, but they, they're the winners and I think that it meant a lot to them and, and it was nice to, to, you know, give that, that kind of support. And in closing, I know, again, my little cheerleading outfit here, the rally, this is a big fundraiser for us, you know, and all this money, we, we give like 99% of our money back, just so you know, our operating expenses are almost nothing. Those are our treasurer, she, she'll vouch for it. We spent almost nothing on anything except for trying to make that dollar stretch as far as we can. So this is important, so your attendance is actually really appreciated and hopefully, you know, maybe buy a couple things, game, you know. So is there, is there, there's no projector I could project this on, is there? Sorry, I'm projector ignorant, okay. There's no screen back there, I keep looking back there like there's a screen.
Oh, there we go.
Awesome. Is that, you know what, let me get the bigger one. Oh, that's too big. Is there some way that I can adjust this? It looks pretty good though. Oh, she's so cute. What do I do?
I think you go to turn that.
This thing? Sorry. I know everybody wants to go home, I just.
Oh, no, no, no worries.
So there's our little flyers, y'all got one when I walked in, you know. But this is our, this is our rally, this is our biggest fundraiser of the year and so, you know, it's one of those things where we try to take a dollar and turn it into a hundred. So we have, we've split it up into two events because last year due to COVID awareness, we got rid of all the bouncies and all the kid stuff, you know, just for proximity reasons. And people really like that, especially the serious golfers. So we have a tropical breeze kid event on April eighth and you just show up, you don't have to buy anything ahead of time, just show up, you know, we're, we're going to try to get some performers there and things of that nature, but just show up and participate and that's, that's a big deal and maybe spend a few bucks, you know, if you could, it'd be, you know. And then Saturday, April ninth, our regular rally on the green and again, all the tickets for that or the tee times are on sale, capecharterfoundation.org, very clear, just redid the entire website, it was a mess before, it is hopefully a lot more comprehensive and easily navigatable. And so, you know, again, please spread this, like, put it up at the, you know, I mean, this really is how we make money, you know, so, so it, it would mean a lot for, you know, for you to come. So that's April ninth and we have two different tee times, there's an eighteen hole and there's also a nine hole. The nine hole's designed to be just kind of slow and like, it doesn't matter if you can golf or not, just take your kid out there, let him swing the clubs, just spend some money and have some fun. Watch the kids, you know, watch all the products of this great system, you know, do their thing. And then the other thing, which actually, I think we made about eighteen thousand dollars off of it last year roughly, was the, the online auction. It's pretty cool. On our website, on the very top, we have an online auction, we've been doing it two, three years, Samantha's spearheading that, Richardson. We have, we keep adding things to the, I mean, there is some cool stuff, like there is like a yacht that you can stay on for two, three days that was donated, like random things that are super cool, like I'm going to bid on that, you know, so, outbid me. So anyway, that's, it's, it's on the website, please just participate, that's all we ask and anybody that's, you know, that you know, just help us push this event and, and we'll continue to try to sprinkle a little fairy dust and that's it. I know this is the longest speech I've ever had, but it means a lot to me, you know.
Absolutely.
So just like you guys are all volunteers, we, you know, we give up a lot of time for this, so all we ask is just cooperate with us and sprinkle some fairy dust.
Fantastic, no, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey Gary, when does the online auction go online?
It's online now. It was, I believe it was February eighteenth, I think we, eighteenth or twenty-second, one of those, but it's on, it's on, it's, it's active and please keep coming back because we keep adding, I mean, literally we have this giant text thread, like, yeah, I just scored this, I just, I mean, it's literally, it's, it's cool, you know, it's really cool to see, people are giving away, they're very, people are very giving right now that are able to give, companies, individuals, so there's some cool stuff there and there, there'll be more to come, so, you know, that all helps immensely and we appreciate it.
Great.
Like that short answer?
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, now we're ready for staff comment.
Good evening, everybody, Donnie Hopper, principal at Oasis Middle. I was going to say, related to the auction, I think you've all dreamt of being a principal for the day, you can do that through the auction. All right, so I got the iPad out here, let's get this projected, maybe? Oh, because it needs a projector, okay. Good call. Get this on presentation. All right, so tonight, give you a little overview of student learning, the most important thing we do, academic instruction to our students. We'll talk just a bit about teacher retention and recruitment, socio-emotional learning, our STEM program and our fantastic intermural program. So our students and how they're doing, in green, this, these are our actual test scores in reading and math from the last school year. So FSA reading is the first column, seventy percent of our students were proficient, that means they were on grade level or beyond in reading and in math, the third column over, seventy-four percent of our students were proficient at the end of last year as measured by the FSA. We use, you've heard a little bit about STAR and our progress monitoring, so the columns in purple indicate where we currently are, so the program does a nice job of predicting student success and right now, this is actually was from January, we know that we are about where we were at the end of last year already when it comes to our reading scores, at seventy percent predicted to pass the FSA and a little bit lagging for FSA math, but again, that still left almost half the school year for students to continue to learn and grow. So we're really happy considering, really hard to believe, we started day one chasing COVID cases, lots of students who were sick and who were out, missing school, that continued for many, many weeks and then we had another bump in January where it was very challenging. So considering all that's going on, our teachers and students are doing a fantastic job. So a little bit about their learning. Onto the issue that you heard about from multiple people with retaining and recruiting teachers. We have been engaged in trying to fill positions since October for all the reasons that Mrs. Collins mentioned of people leaving, we've been dealing with that and especially at Oasis Middle School for reasons, again, the same ones that Mrs. Collins pointed out, but unlike anything I've ever faced in education, I've been doing this for 25 years, six teachers have left mid-year, that just doesn't happen typically. But we are very fortunate to be able to recruit some of the best. So it looked like, I think it was like 115 applicants for this year, that's not such a bad thing when they are the best of the best. So all six of the teachers that I pulled in to fill those open positions this year have been from the school district of Lee County. They've come from our neighboring schools, they've also come from Fort Myers schools. So very proud to be able to be a place where people want to be, families want to be there, we know that, we have a waiting list for students, but we have a waiting list for teachers, they want to be there and be a part of what we're doing, so that's really, really cool to have that. Our social emotional curriculum, really important that we pay attention to the mental health of everyone in our building, we focus on our students for sure. We use a program called Habitudes, it's designed by the company called Growing Leaders. The top three embold topics are topics we have already covered with our students. We do this mostly through a Zoom platform so we can reach all 840 students.
Sorry.
All 840 students in one fail swoop and then the next three topics on the bottom are topics yet to get to before we get into our testing season. This blends a mix of video clips, questioning for the students where we put them into pairs, they buddy up and they talk about the different topics at hand. And again, we still have more to do to get through this entire program. The world of STEM, so I think you heard last time that we were chosen as a IT EEAS STEM School of Excellence, we're super proud of that, congratulations to our team. They don't just choose anyone, it's not, you know, not a banner that you get just for paying the money, you have to be doing engaging rigorous content and they have quite the board that goes through the selection process to make sure all the pieces are in place. We have all of our equipment and materials readily available thanks to Dr. Omenson, the grant from the state and our teachers working diligently to make sure these things are in place. You see the kids on the top center, that was just today, building catapults and just so many cool things going on, the new 3D printers are down at the bottom, they do not have time to eat bonbons and cheesy fries in those classes by all means. And last but not least, our sports program, like to focus on our academics of course, but we also have an amazing sports program focused on sportsmanship. Just this year, we have three teams that have put banners into our gym, our girls' cross-country team, we're the Lee County runner-ups, our, we had one standout girl, Jaslyn Forbes, she was the charter state champion for cross-country. Our boys volleyball, we're the North Division champions, that basically means the best in the Cape and our boys' basketball team, also North Division champs, that banner just came in today and that is Coach Palmer, the SRO at the elementary school, Oasis Elementary South, and he's very proud of the work his team did. So we'll be getting a picture with the team and getting that banner hung in our gym. I think that's all I have. Thanks so much.
All right, any questions? Great, great update, thank you.
Dr. Manaya, can I, can I add to his presentation?
Surely.
Kobe Palmer was just featured in that last picture, he was, he's our SRO at Oasis Elementary South. He is also the police officer of the year this year.
Oh.
Because of all the extra activity that he does on his own time, on his own dime for, for kids that need assistance with the police athletic league, he checks up on them, he, oh, there it is, yes, there it is.
Police officer of the year.
He really does a lot of work for these, for these students and we're very proud to have him as part of our family.
Wonderful.
And there's one more thing, I, I forgot that I, while I'm talking. We were just alerted today that the news press has the 2021 Best of Cape Coral Awards and the winner for the public school category was Oasis High School.
Wow.
Yes? And the finalist, the first finalist was Oasis Elementary School, followed thereafter by Trafalgar Elementary. So congratulations to Oasis Elementary South and the high school.
Fantastic, all right, well, just such great news today. Okay, any final board comments, what, any new business? Okay, how about final board comments?
Yeah, I have to stop, I have to leave right, in like 30 seconds, so I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone. The Lighthouse Awards were great, and it was nice to celebrate everyone. I am going to be, you know, I was listening about, you know, some of the concerns with the teacher recruitment. Obviously, we feel that as well in higher ed. But I'm going to be sending you, Jackie, some resources that might be beneficial to just kind of review. And also, I did have a short conversation with Mrs. Collins earlier today about maybe seeing what the process is regarding adding a student seat to the board, and also reviewing and possibly revising the parent involvement policy that I saw was in that, in the high school charter. So that's for future, you know, for future meetings, so I just wanted to say that, so, but thank you, and I'm sorry, I have to go.
Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, when we're talking about different accolades, especially, and that press release that you're going to do, the communications department in the city is fabulous now. We've built a really strong one. And please let them help you, or send it to me, so I can get it to Melissa Mickey, she chairs, she's head of that department, and they're fabulous, so that would be really good. And I was reading today, I don't know if this is of any interest to you all, but looks like the legislative $50,000 exemption for teachers. I think you all know about that, right? It's going to be an additional $50,000 homestead exemption for teachers, for firefighters, people. It has moved again, so it's had its next round of approval, and it looks like that may pass. It's kind of an unintended consequence, because we probably lose money, but you all get, but it might help teachers, so I think that'd be great. The Lighthouse Awards, thank you for inviting me, they were just fabulous. Also, that would be a press release you should give us, so we can, you know, go ahead and put those award teachers out there. So anything you want to feed us, and I'll send it to them and make sure they get it out, thank you.
Great, any other comments? All right, well, great, thank you for an incredible meeting. And our next governing board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 12th, 5:30, here at City Council Chambers. And adjourned. Thank you all.